All right. Hi, everyone. Calling to order the Board of Commissioners in our scheduled work session. It is August 3rd, 2022. The time now is 10 o'clock. Present in the room this morning is Commissioner Derek DeGroot, myself, Commissioner Kelly Minty, and Commissioner Dale Tensley. Before I go through the agenda, if my colleagues could let me know if they find meeting minutes from last time we were together acceptable to be marked as approved.
Those are good. They're fine.
Good. All right. Thanks, guys. So our first order of business is the PSU Klamath County Housing Needs Assessment, rather, and I don't think we'll have those on board quite yet. So I'm going to move us. I know we do have Alex Campbell for Oregon Housing and Community Services joining us. Alex, can you hear me okay? Yeah, cool. So if you don't mind, you can be up first. So Alex is here with the CDBG infrastructure funding. I asked him if he would be willing to sort of go through it with our board. So Alex, I'll hand the floor to you then.
Great. Thank you, Commissioner. As a preliminary, just want to say that acknowledge that we've got ironies, I think, in our disaster recovery funding system, and that is that the, obviously, the bootleg fire was much more significant in Klamath County than the 242 fire. But the 242 fire was part of a federal disaster declaration, and therefore, we have some additional federal resources to assist with it. So what I'm going to be talking about today is a program within our disaster recovery CDBG grant. The federal government appropriate has to do a special appropriation to make these funds available. They did that last fall. We got the rules in, under a federal register notice in February, and we have a draft, well, an action plan under review by HUD currently. We included in this program, within the larger grant, a planning, infrastructure, and economic recovery program that also includes eligibility of mitigation projects. And in large part because of that mitigation potential, we wanted to be absolutely sure that Klamath County was included, even though you aren't actually included by default. We took the extra step to include Klamath County. So I have a PowerPoint. It's kind of long. I'll send the longer version to you all for your reference. I'll cover the first few slides that are the big picture. The additional slides go into more detail about CDBGDR, CDBGDR rules and regs. So let me get that going. I think you got my screen there. So starting with a sub-allocation. So we waited, we were looking at the 2020 wildfires. We allocated funds according to the proportion of the housing units lost, proportion of FEMA public assistance, and proportion of total number of business applications. That's what we did first. And when we got, we did that, there were very low awards for Douglas County and Klamath County. And we said, that doesn't really make sense. One, it doesn't make sense just on its face. But two, dealing with a few hundred thousand dollars of federal money, we know is sometimes more trouble than it's worth. So we added a fourth factor, mitigation needs, and we just assumed all of these counties have substantial mitigation needs. So the fourth factor was just, we assigned equally. So a quarter of the, one, yeah, one factor, one of the four factors was just an equal allocation. So the allocation for Klamath County would be $1.7 million. The activities that are eligible are planning, infrastructure, economic recovery, and mitigation. The planning, infrastructure, and economic recovery projects are, need to have a tieback to the 242 disaster. Mitigation projects, on the other hand, are more forward-looking, and so could relate to any disaster identified in the state natural hazard mitigation plan, which rolls up all the county natural hazard mitigation plans. So any natural hazard identified in Klamath County's natural hazard mitigation plan, you could spend this money towards mitigation work that would mitigate those, mitigate against the impacts of those disasters. And also mitigation's a little broader than that because there are general purpose, basically, infrastructure, you know, your emergency services infrastructure. So communications towers, things like that would be, would mitigate against, you know, a wide range of future natural disasters. We've set a minimum sub-recipient grant agreement of $500,000. We don't mean that that's the minimum project size, but just for our systems and ability to get this money out, we don't want to do tens and twenties of grant agreements. We want, you know, we want to minimize that. So if you do want to do multiple different activities, we're going to ask that those be included under one grant agreement. The eligible sub- recipients would include, I think, just about anybody that you all might want to fund a mitigation project through, with one exception, and that is private investor-owned utilities. They're just by rule under CDBGDR, not an eligible sub- recipient. Our, the process that we're looking at would be, we'd ask one representative of the county, one representative of the long-term recovery group, one representative of the economic development district, and one representative of the tribe to come together. If you all wanted to bring in additional entities to the discussion, you know, we'd certainly support that, whether you invite them in as voting members or non-voting ex officio members. We would look to that group to define projects, the total project amount, and who the lead agency is. And then that lead agency would develop a project description. We would, as OHS, we would review that, make sure that it's compliant with the CDBGDR rules, and then move into a grant agreement with that designated entity. This is federal money, so of course, there's a lot of cross-cutting requirements that you all are familiar with, from NEPA, National Environmental Policy Act, to Davis Bacon prevailing wage. So, you know, we built into this process those steps to make clear that they're going to be involved. I think that's really the key points that I wanted to cover today. As I said, we've got a lot of more detail in this PowerPoint. The thing that I should just close with is the timeline that we're thinking about. I'm anticipating getting out to you all and the other local agencies and tribal partners who are eligible and are going to be making these decisions, a draft set of policy guidelines. I'm going to be, excuse me, I can't turn off that phone. I'm going to be out for a couple of weeks and leaving August 11th. So my commitment, my plan is to get a draft of those policy guidelines out to you all next week. So you have an opportunity to review them, make sure that they, they're going to make sense and be workable. And then we'd be publishing a set of program guidelines early this fall. We don't yet have an approved action plan from HUD, so that's a step that needs to happen. But I anticipate we'd have the policy guidelines finalized and published October. And then depending upon how quickly you all want to run your local process to select projects, which we're largely going to leave up to you. You know, what level of process you think is appropriate and needed. I'm sure you've got identified projects already that, you know, public involvement and public process informed. So if you wanted to draw on those prior, you know, processes, that is fine with us. And so we, in terms of timeline, so we could be, if you all are ready and have an identified project, second half of this fall, we could enter a grant agreement and start working the project. We, there is not a lot of urgency from just the standpoint of the rules of CDBGDR. We have six years to implement this grant. So why don't I stop there and see if there are clarifying questions? I know I kind of jumped in, and I'm doing this presentation a lot. So there may have been preliminaries or obvious things that I didn't cover. So I'd welcome any clarifications I could provide.
Sure, Alex, and I'll check with my colleagues in one second. But I just wanted to clarify that when I first heard this presentation, I was sort of shocked in a way that, like, wow, all of a sudden, we've been designated this 1.7 million. I hadn't really heard about it, and I hadn't heard what was the county's role and responsibilities, which I think, from what I'm hearing from you, it is our responsibility to put together a project selection committee and potentially a list of projects, which, I mean, is an exciting opportunity. But I just want to, like, sort of double-check with you. Is that the county's only obligation, or what is the county's obligation?
Yes. So we're really leaving it to the local entities to self-organize. If the county's willing to sort of take the lead and hurt that small number of cats, that would be fabulous. I'm bringing on some regional staff over the next couple of months. So we'll have a little bit of staff time that we could support, you know, meeting scheduling and minutes and that kind of thing for that process. But yeah, what we're looking to the county and those organizations is to select projects and identify project leads who are interested in carrying out those projects. We can fund, you know, eligible costs include the management of the project, you know, some overhead. So I anticipate that it wouldn't be burdensome on any agency that, you know, somebody who's got an eligible activity, this is probably an attractive grant opportunity.
Okay. Let me check in with my colleagues. What questions do the commissioners have or comments?
So Alex, Derek DeGroot, just first, thank you for your work. Appreciate all of it. And then there'll definitely be some projects that are going to be worthwhile, especially tied to the 242. Only question I have is, which I didn't see, are you going to directly fund to projects? Or is the county to act like, as a pass-through for the funds?
Our thought is, if they're, if they're large projects, to just do it directly.
Okay.
You know, if you, if there are, if you identify a lot of projects, we're going to ask you to be that pass-through entity. But otherwise, just do it directly.
So if we were to identify multiple projects that were under the $500,000, you would ask us to bundle those and then act as a pass-through to all of those separate entities?
Exactly.
Copy. Thank you.
Chief, Commissioner.
That's okay. No, I'm good. Thank you.
All right. So Alex, that was super helpful. I don't think we have any more questions from the board, but it sounds like you'll prepare for us some potential policies, and then we'll work on our end at thinking about the project selection committee. And I know you've particularly identified the recovery group representative, the tribes, the county, I think there was a fourth.
Yeah, the Economic Development District. So, go ahead. So, you know, as that is an eligible entity or an eligible activity, we thought there would be good personnel at the table.
Yeah. All right. Well, we'll work on it on our end, but thank you for being our, sort of our go-to person for technical expertise on it.
All right. Absolutely. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thanks, Alex. So we'll move back up in our agenda. We did skip ahead just a little. And we do have folks from PSU on the line to help us with the Housing Needs Assessment Report, to sort of lay it out for us, and then take any questions. Thank you so much for joining us. We have, you know, maybe 15 minutes with you. I know you could probably spend two hours and 15 minutes with us, but maybe give us some of the highlights, and then I'll check in with the board as to whether the board has questions. So I don't know whether it's Karen or Eliza that wants to kick us off, but I'll let you to decide that.
Great. Thanks. Yeah, I'll be walking through the PowerPoint that I have with you. So screen sharing would be super helpful, and I will be flipping through slides to make this fit within your time. Thanks. So Karen and I are from Portland State University. And this past year, we were asked to do a Housing Needs Assessment in Klamath County, and we'll just be presenting the high-level findings in combination with a report that we sent. And I'll put a copy of the report in the chat right now as well.
And you should be able to screen share. Alex was able to, but if not, we can grab, Dale might be in the hallway. We could probably grab him to, he's coming in.
Yep, looks like I can. Should be there once again. Okay, you'll see some funky stuff for a second, and then we'll get there. All right. So the study purpose was just to gather information about housing residential services needs of Klamath County residents. And this is really just to inform future interventions and service design.
Hey, Elisa, I'm going to interrupt and let you know you're sharing. Share a different screen.
Swapping now. How about that?
That's better. Thanks.
Better. Thank you, Karen. Glad there's two of us. We addressed these four research questions. I'm not going to read them for time. But you can. We spoke with 46 key informants. Those are people who work with people who are experiencing homelessness, behavioral health clinicians, and administrators, and people in the housing workforce. We also hosted 11 focus groups with 57 individuals with lived experience in Klamath County. So Karen and I went to Klamath County and hosted these individuals, these focus groups. And we also circulated client surveys for people experiencing homelessness and people with, to understand from people with behavioral health conditions, their perspective. And then we did some secondary data analysis. So we're hoping that this is really a robust study. These are kind of the overview of people who we spoke with in the key informant data collection areas. We really focused on people who had experience working with people who were currently experiencing homelessness. And then we also spoke with a large percentage of law enforcement-affected workforce who have done the experience of working with that group as well, and then behavioral health workers. We purposefully oversampled for groups that were underrepresented in other studies or overrepresented in the population that was currently experiencing homelessness. So people who are non-white, people who are older, veterans. And then, of course, the homeless population. We purposefully spoke with them in a larger percentage for this study. The key finding that we found from all of these data was that housing with wraparound services that enabled people to stay housed was the largest unmet need across all the data sources. And we use the data to kind of understand why this is. So one of the first reasons is that people have complex needs that affect their ability to stay housed. So just putting them in a house may not be the most robust solution. There is not enough shelter and affordable housing options in Klamath County and Klamath Falls. And this mismatch between behavioral healthcare providers not wanting to be landlords and not being in the housing business, and then housing providers not being trained behavioral healthcare providers. The demographic, geographic, and historical context is one of the questions that we use to kind of guide this study. So in the data collection, we found that a lot of the key informants that we spoke with and the focus groups had this narrative that Klamath County and Klamath Falls is more homogeneous than the rest of the state. But we checked with the census, and it seems that the demographics are really similar to the rest of Oregon. Klamath County is about, on average, four years older than the rest of the state. And of course, the population is growing. We all know Klamath County is a beautiful place to be. The long-time residents have this narrative of being displaced by newer and wealthier residents, and that was driving their experience of housing insecurity. And homeless residents have a limited income, although the vast majority of them did have some type of income. Some of them earned up to, or had an income of about $1,100 a month. And even with that, they were unable to find housing. And we also heard this influx of unsheltered homeless in warmer months, and then those folks moving on in winter when the cold and extreme conditions made it untenable to be unsheltered. The geographic context is, you know, you know where you live. The one aspect of this that we felt like really affected housing and behavioral health services is this idea of the town day culture, where folks will drive, you know, from tumult or farther outlying town into Klamath Falls, get all of their needs met on that one trip, and then drive home. And so if their behavioral health appointment or their housing support appointment is delayed or doesn't fall on the day that they usually go to town or they don't get childcare that day, that just won't work for them. And so they don't end up getting services. There's also, of course, the extreme climate that we talked about, which means that a seasonal shelter doesn't always meet the needs if it's unseasonably hot or unseasonably cold outside of the time that that shelter is scheduled to be open. That kind of impacts people who are unsheltered. And then this kind of general trend emerged from most people who we spoke with, that it just seems to be getting worse. The majority of housing in Klamath County is renter occupied. About 54% of people who live in Klamath, in Klamath Falls, rent their home. And a previous study found that 33% of Klamath County residents paid more than 50% of their income in rent. So that's severely rent burdened. And then there's this kind of, another theme that emerged that the tribes are perceived to get more funding. And then the groups, the minority groups, are trying to get served. People do have this, they know that the minority groups need to get served, but maybe those groups don't feel as welcomed or there's some type of barrier there where they don't, they don't access the services that are designed for them. And this is kind of the main theme that we heard emerge over and over, that this caveat that renters must earn three times the rent for landlords to rent to them was mentioned over and over in both focus groups and in the key informant group. And so this basically means if a unit is rented for, like, $700 a month, really, anyone who earns less than $2,100 a month cannot rent that unit. So that unit is unavailable to them. And that's about 60% of the median income in Klamath County. So we looked at the greatest unmet behavioral healthcare needs in Klamath County, and again, housing emerged. Having first ideas that housing is kind of the first need that needs to get met before behavioral health needs can be met. So we looked at why housing isn't met here, and two different themes emerged. One is economics, just a mismatch of the amount of money that HUD vouchers are given out for, and then fair market rate. And then unmanaged behavioral health conditions, which makes it difficult to rent to these individuals. There's also a lack of substance use disorder treatment that behavioral health agencies in Klamath County know about. And then, of course, mental health services are available, but maybe less frequently or less intensive, like group therapy rather than individual therapy, or peer supports rather than individual therapy with a licensed therapist, monthly therapy rather than weekly, for example. And of course, these needs are currently being met, but sometimes not as well as they could be. So folks do have shelter. It's insecure in some cases. So self-funded motel stays is one way that people meet their shelter needs. Another way is couch surfing or doubling up or just being unsheltered or camping outside. Folks do get residential substance use disorder and behavioral health services, but the long wait time for those services sometimes leads to relapse. The infrequent behavioral health services, of course, could be increased, and then less intensive behavioral health services. And we identified some barriers from the data that we collected. Housing, of course, for staff and clients is a key barrier to providing mental health services and receiving mental health services. And then we also looked at some priority populations, groups that seem to have a little bit more burden to get these services than others. So for example, the LGBTQIA2+ group won't access some shelters if they don't feel safe in them. Spanish-speaking population has, they experience a lack of bicultural stuff. And then also this idea that the staff who are bilingual are being asked to be interpreters instead of being providers in their first language or second language. And of course, for the unhoused group, there's just a lack of housing and sanitation and stability in their housing. And the current services are inadequate, although some are working. And we wanted to point out the ones that seem to be really successful. For example, behavioral health services are working. The Link Access Center seems to be working. Services for reentering the community following incarceration seems to be working. There's a lot of wraparound services there. And of course, some things that didn't work that folks pointed out to us was just a lack of affordable housing, long wait times, like we said. The rental subsidy is just not meeting the fair market rate. So there, somebody can have a rental subsidy in their hand but still not be able to find an apartment. Seasonal shelters that close before the weather gets better or close before the weather gets more moderate. And then contingent shelter stays, which just doesn't match the housing-first model, which is housing first and then sobriety or behavioral health services. We identified a few recommendations that we go into more detail into the report, but really just first addressing the disconnect between housing and behavioral healthcare, maintaining and increasing the availability of behavioral healthcare supports, expanding access to culturally appropriate shelter and housing options, and addressing systemic and economic barriers to accessing housing. And of course, continuing to follow data-driven approaches, like the housing-first model. We go into detail in all three of these, or all four of these recommendations. I don't feel like I have time to do that, right? But I'll flip through them. The Link Access Center seemed to emerge over and over again as something that was really helpful for this group. And then, of course, the housing-first approach is developing a continuum of housing options to meet diverse needs. So a variety of different options and having the ability to choose. A collaboration that we identified was to work with landlords, property management companies, and homeowners to make properties available to people in need. And then another theme that emerged was the confusion around how to access legal help if someone felt like their renter rights were violated. And then the directed to of the 2018 Community Health Improvement Plan is to implement a variety of housing education programs geared toward housing assistance and renter education. And class has a full description of that in their report. So I'm happy to go back and delve more deeply into any of that. I flipped through that really fast, or answering any questions to the best of our ability.
Yeah. Thank you, Elisa. Let me check in with the board and see what questions or thoughts my colleagues would like to share.
Sure.
So a couple. This is Derek DeGroot.
Yeah.
So it seems like the study is fairly focused on more of the disadvantage in those experiencing homelessness or the inability to afford housing when it becomes available in Klamath County. But it doesn't seem as though the study tries to address the difficulties that industry is also facing when it comes to full employment and providing housing for people trying to move in from outside the area. Because we have such a workforce need, but we don't have the housing to address the workforce need as we're trying to fill those positions. So that seems to be a big kind of, so there's many different pieces of the housing market where we have extreme shortages, and it's not just on the lower side. I can tell you, so. I can tell you, so I am a landlord uh and have several units. And uh there is quite a disconnect between uh those providing uh assistance to help somebody move into a unit and the timeframe in which our business model allows that to happen, right? I'm not gonna wait three months with an empty unit while I wait for a, a security deposit to get processed through something that's just not gonna happen. Uh the other things that tend to be, you know, what we're seeing is because of that gap in necessarily the middle of the housing market, we're seeing more people applying for lower, what would typically be lower-income housing units uh that are just, quite frankly, more qualified and less trouble. You know, so uh as a, as a business model, I have a quieter building, I have less stress, and people pay their rent on time, and they're, you know, tend to take better care of my building. Why would I rent to someone who, who didn't fit those? So um as we're looking at solving the housing solution, I think that sometimes we miss a boat when we say we just need more low-income housing units. I actually think that we actually have a fairly decent size of low-income housing units. What we don't have is for people to move out of those units and into that next level of housing. That, that next step for people to move up and make those housing units available for our lower-income uh citizens is missing. Uh so it, just my perspective on, on the housing market. And I've been in it a minute or two.
I think that's one reason why we proposed like getting um people together, especially from the other studies, to have a more in-depth discussion. And I know that you all have been working on this for a really long time and have been discussing this for a really long time. I'm just wondering if maybe there's some, uh some new information um or perspectives. We, we, we do recommend, like, really uh uh addressing the, the need for housing for uh behavioral healthcare providers especially uh because of the um lack of workforce in that and the fact that um for, i- in order to make people able to do, um you know, to move into a different um level of housing um as well as to even maintain the most minimal housing, there really are behavioral healthcare supports that need to be provided. And um and then also, yeah, working directly with, with landlords and other housing providers to sort of tackle, tackle those issues because I, you know, totally understand how, you know, um managing multiple units and, you know, the potential, how much trouble that is if you have really disruptive renters and empty, empty um, empty units, especially when you're, you're, you know, you're paying for them while they're empty. So um.
Yeah, and absolutely. And behavioral health ends up being a big piece, but you know, we kind of have a chicken and egg problem all surrounding the hu- housing market around behavioral health. If you talk to KBBH, they could hire a hundred people right now if they could fill the positions. But every time they fill a position, they move into our community and they can't find housing and they take a job somewhere else. So, so do you address the housing for the behavioral health workforce? So that you can address the behavioral health needs first, or do you try to address the behavioral needs with housing? You see, yeah.
Yeah, I, it's a definitely a multi-pronged approach. And I think uh it, to some extent, you know, it's, you get really stuck and it's hard to find a path forward. But to, to some extent, um sort of figuring out what, what can be done quickly with very little effort versus what is more long-term, long-term issue in a long-term project. And, and sort of trying to like um figure out the, the different options and, and seeing which ones can be tackled and, and which ones are more farther down the road. Um I don't know, Alisa, you, you looked a lot more at sort of the um, the issues around housing and middle income and low income and, and like vacancy rates. Did, did you have anything else to add about that?
Yeah, I think you said it. It's a multi-pronged approach. There are, you know, if, if a house is on the market, but it's listed at a rate that's unaffordable to um, you know, to the low-income community, that house is therefore available to the middle-income community. And just figuring out how many units you need listed at what uh, at what income level or what, you know, affordability is, I think, a task. And you're, you're not alone. You know, this is a systemic issue. Um there was a study from Econ Northwest that looked a little bit at breaking down, like, how many units you need at each income level. Um, you know, whether or not you feel like that's an accurate representation of the community. I feel like you know the community best.
We need six hundred units right now across all income levels. That's, that's, that's really the number that we're missing.
Right, right. So, so then if, if there's six hundred units available at the, you know, a hundred and twenty percent of the income level, if they're listed at that to rent, then how does that impact the housing market down the line? As opposed if you list, you know, six hundred units at the HUD voucher rate, that's probably too many for that income level, but figuring out how many you need, right? Yeah.
Yeah, I, can I, I just want to point one thing out to, just in terms of like looking at um the aging population and, and long-term residents being displaced. As we did speak with a number of um residents who'd, who'd lost their housing, who were older. And um, yeah, and you're not necessarily disruptive, but so there are like these, some economic and systemic issues that could be, you know, looked at and addressed um from, from that perspective. And in some cases, they lost their housing because they couldn't afford to repair their property or because they, they own property, but it didn't have any plumbing on it. Um and that kind of thing. So there, there are some definite nuances that, that could be looked at from that perspective as well.
All right. Um so finally checking with the board, whether you have any additional questions for our guests. All right. Thank you so much for joining us. We appreciate both your work and then your ability to come in and present to us.
Thanks for having us.
All right. Uh moving on in our agenda, the next item is Klamath Basin National Wildlife Refuge. Greg Austin, come on. Uh as a reminder, uh identify yourself. I have first to be speak on the record and uh Sherman Ford. What you're here for?
Sure. Yeah, I'm, so I'm Greg Austin. I'm the project leader of US Fish and Wildlife Service. I'm the project leader of the Klamath Basin National Wildlife Refuge Complex. We manage six refuges in the Klamath Basin. Three of them in um Klamath County. And today, we'll, we'll, the three Klamath County, Clear Valley Refuge, Upper Klamath, and Klamath Marsh. And today, we're talking about Klamath Marsh Refuge. So the reason I'm here today is we're proposing, looking at a proposal to purchase a three thousand acre ranch that's adjacent to the marsh. To put it in a bigger perspective, where I'm not sure if you've been to the Klamath Marsh Refuge before. And then here is where the property sits. So this is a willing seller. His name is Sam Stafford. I think he's just done. He's been up there a long time.
Yeah.
Yeah, and it's a, he's grazed it for years. He came to us and wants to preserve it. And uh so as part of our process, our realty process, uh our requirement is to inform the counties of what we're trying to do. And then um hopefully, we're in agreement. But, and then we have a requirement to get governors here. So um. So we have, so it's a three thousand acre marsh, three thousand one hundred seventy-eight. Um where it sits right now, one thousand four hundred ninety-seven acres fall within our existing refuge boundary. And the other sixteen hundred acres are outside the refuge boundary, which we would have to uh approve, expand our refuge boundary. It's, the Klamath Marsh Refuge is the largest uh freshwater marsh in Oregon. This is grassland and wet meadows. Um honestly, it's been a little overgrazed. We'll probably need to rest it. And then our tools up here, what we, what we use right now, we have grazing. We, um we approve grazing on the refuge, also hay and, and then prescribe fire on, on the, on the marsh right now. We do offer, so this is former uh Klamath Tribe's reservations. Also, we're close enough to the tribes on all the restoration that we did on the, on the marsh. Any other highlights you guys can, can think of? So this is Mike Johnson. He's the refuge manager onsite. He lives there. And Jeremy Welsh as well, but they live up there.
Well, I have a question. I know that um, a very basic question. We already struggled to get water to the refuges. So it seems um, it, it seems a little not sensible to me to expand the refuge when we're already having trouble getting water. So can you, curious about that?
Yeah. So the Klamath Marsh Refuge is different. So we act, the Williamson River runs right through the middle of it. So we have, I don't know, sixteen miles of Williamson River roughly that run through the, through the marsh. So this marsh is different. It's um, again, it's, it, the marsh itself is a forty thousand acre marsh that then feeds, this water that runs through here feeds uh Upper Klamath Lake. So this is, and then Big Springs Creek, which used to be one of the larger contributors to the system, runs through this property. It's, the individuals upstream now use most of it. It's just a trickle. But historically, Big Springs was, was as big or bigger of a contributor to Klamath Lake than Williamson at one point. So we have a potential to do some restoration on it. And then what we offer, um we do, you know, for this, I would say, you know, we have onsite, we have onsite presence. We do have uh, uh wildland firefighting um folks in the area. We also have law enforcement that we provide within, within the area as well.
Uh what questions does the board have?
I don't have any questions. I'll just let you know I have a question. Uh I'm not in favor of the federal government increasing its footprint in Klamath County. Or moving farmland protections, just as a dip. We do plan on that one of the tools will be uh grazing and hay. So it needs to come back. It's loose state right now. But again, that's what we do offer up here. So we bring in local farmers. Um that's part of what we do. And I totally get that and kind of get the system. It's just, federal government already owns over half of our county. I, I just don't see how expanding that footprint is beneficial to Klamath County businesses.
What's the, and maybe Rick, maybe I'm asking you this, I'm kind of catching you off guard. What's the financial impact and the financial loss to the county by this sale?
Typically, ag ground isn't uh, isn't a high tax rate anyway. So I, top my, I didn't even catch what the acreage is of this three thousand. I don't know that it's gonna be significant, but it's not gonna be nothing.
Jeremy, can I see this? So what we offer, we used to have payment in lieu of taxes, and then now it's termed refuge ravelry sharing. So nationwide, if we, like, for instance, do the uh grazing or hay, and it goes into a big bucket, and then we get our percentage back. And some of that goes to the counties. It's not much.
So you're talking Kukulak funding, right?
Um, well, no, that's separate. That's, that's, yep, yep. So that's, that's, yeah, the Kukulak is under the congressional, so there's a requirement. I think you guys get ten percent of that as well. So there, here's what we provide to, so Bear Valley, Klamath Marsh. I don't know what Klamath was, was in. In Upper Klamath, all are within Klamath County. And this small portion of Lower Klamath is, as well. So that was last year what um be provided to the county through refuge ravelry sharing.
So my other question I have, I'm sorry. Just help me understand process a little bit. Maybe give me a little bit of an education. What are you looking for from us? Can, I mean, if we say no, we don't like this sale for whatever reason, right? You guys probably just buy it anyway. So what do you need, what, what's the point of today?
This is a part of our realty process, honestly. So we would inform the governor in, in our letter that you, you were opposed.
I see. Okay.
And if that changes the governor's decision or not, I don't know.
Right. Okay.
Uh any other questions or thoughts for our guests?
Well, the, the last comment I'll make, and then, then we'll move on. Um I just want to be completely honest and transparent with you as well. My wife and I own a cattle ranch. Uh the protection of farmland has been a priority of mine for a long time. I ran a campaign um to be a commissioner and was highly supported by our, our agricultural community. And I said time and time again that I would fight to continue to, to protect farmland. So that being said, I probably, I'm not going to support it as well.
And just let you know, so from our refuge complex, I mean, we support, we, we have grazing, hay on Klamath Marsh, Upper Klamath, Lower Klamath, and Clear Lake. Farming on the refuge, I mean, this is what we do. I mean, that's part of what we, we, it's just part of what we do. I mean, we just, we got sued four times in ours, in our, what we call it, the cons- comprehensive conservation plan. It's gone through three courts. The recent went through appellate court. And uh we won on all, on all cases. They keep, it's, it's constant. Environmental groups came after us on our grazing and our um farming. And um the group, the judge ruled in our favor on all counts. So where we as the refuge complex, this is part of what we do because it goes hand in hand. It's a tool, when we, when we put grazing out there, for example, the difference between us and my course is we have to show that if there's a benefit, a wildlife benefit. So we're doing like this long-term study up here. We have Oregon's frog, frog, now that's listed, isn't it? We're working with USGS, and we're showing that we can have grazing and it's a benefit to frogs. So it's, it's, it's this really, because we don't, we need those, those changes. We just can't let it just, just.
That would encourage you to convince BLM of that. That would be very helpful.
Well, there is, there, that's the difference between us and BLM. When we go in, we have to show, and, and we are. It's, it's, it's an amazing study. And if we did nothing, it just becomes overgrown and nothing uses it.
Well, I respect and appreciate the work that you guys are doing on, on, on the marsh and whatnot. But again, um protection of farmland is a top priority of mine, and I think I would be a hypocrite. And I would be, I would look very silly to people that supported that cause.
So it sounds like by consensus, there won't be a support by our county, but we do appreciate you presenting to the board.
All right. All right. Thanks for your time.
And I do appreciate your work. Thank you.
So finally, Nimrod Park issue, Vince. Vince, you're, you're listed on my agenda. If you brought guests, uh we can probably, I can, you know. The Steve City, I have your seat. Okay. Well, you're, you're welcome to sit. Thank you.
I mean, it's yours, dude. Perfect. Everyone needs a good set of ears.
So the first time you uh speak on, please identify yourself, and Rick, we may need you in this box.
Can we get in on this?
Yep, have a seat.
Well, uh, uh, I mean, are you, I have Vince tagged to speak.
Sure.
Are you, are you just here to observe and listen, or if, how about I'll call you up if we have questions? Because that's how we generally do it. It's just the speaker.
My name is Vincent Belachi. I live in Sprague River. A long time.
Yes, sir.
And I, I'm here to talk about the Nimrod Park. And I think there's been a lot of injustice by the county in all their procedures. I've studied this very intensely. Now, on the first page, here on item one, it shows the property, uh Nimrod County Park and uh Lot Twenty-One. Those are both on the deed that were given to the people for recreation. And uh on item, okay, I, I don't, item one again, it shows that this map was done in nineteen sixty-four. The park's been there, or the recreation area's been there for fifty-eight years. Fifty-eight years. And it shows on the deed on item two, lots twenty and twenty-one, I highlighted it for you. And then on the second parcel down below, lots five and twelve. On lots twenty and twenty-one's off Cooney Street, off Drew's Road. And lots five and twelve are off of Josephine, which is about six, seven miles further upriver on Drew's Road. On item two again, on the second page, it says, in the deed, this conveyance is made on the express condition that the premises hereby conveyed should be and remain forever. Forever. A public park for the use and enjoyment of grantees and assessors. Subject, however, to the condition that if any other use, right now, the use that changed over us for a couple of cows. That's the use. They took away our recreation area that we've had in Sprague River for longer than I've been there. And I think it's been injustice. I should, I would recommend an investigation in all departments, like the county assessor's office and the Parks Department. On item three, let's go to item three. In two thousand thirteen, from Tom Chris, Parks Manager, he's informing me that they went out and cleaned up the park, which was good. And I appreciated it, what he did. Because that's her responsibility for our recreation. Okay, now, on item four, this is a full discussion. On either ten twenty-five thirteen or eleven one thirteen, that's before Commissioner Mindy was a commissioner. She was in Sprague River, talking to the people about being elected to the county commissioner office. Well, the call I received from the Parks Manager was, he was asking me what I thought about selling the park. Here's our park manager wanting to sell our park to an adjoining neighbor. Well, that's the only recreation we have in Sprague River. We have no school grounds for the kids, we have nothing. That's the only access, public access, that I told him, I said, heck no, Tom. I said, that's our only, that's why they called this whole area Nimrod Park, is because of that park. And now you want to sell it? You know, it just doesn't make sense. The park manager is supposed to be for recreation and he's penalizing our community where we have nothing at all. And then people wonder why the kids and everybody gets in so much trouble, there's nothing else to do. Item five is showing public access to, to the recreational areas. The first one, item five, on August the fifth, two thousand, well, back, I'm jumped around. Tom Chris wanted to take the neighbor down to the meeting and introduce him to the community. But after he got done talking to me, he said, no, I'm not gonna do that now because I didn't want to interfere with her meeting with the community, with the Commissioner Mindy. You know, I'm eighty-five years old now and I'm getting hard to get around here, even my mind. But anyway, it shows all the sign, county parks. That means it's in the county parks system. That's why it's got an S on the end of it.
So Vince, let me have you pause for a minute. So what is your request of the board today? What is, I need you to lay out what we're doing here today. Because we can go through all of these independently as board members, but what is the actual, what is the asset of the board?
The outcome? Well, I have, the whole outcome was, our park, I use different terminology, it was stolen from us. It was actually stolen from us by the county parks director, I think. He instigated selling the park to the neighbor. After saying, but he ended, the neighbor ended up getting the park. And now the new owners that own the park and the property is sitting right here in this room. They have documentation, say they own lots twenty and twenty-one.
So let me.
Excuse me, I talked loud because I can't hear.
I, I understand that, and I talk quiet, so I'm trying to talk louder. Let me check in with, I want to check in with county staff and get a little bit of a status update for the board. Because you have to remember, you're living and breathing this and we're dealing with all the different things you saw today. So we don't probably know this. So let me get in.
Which department do you represent?
I'm Rick Vaughn, I'm the Clamath County Tax Collector, Property Manager, and Code Enforcement Manager.
So can you also fill the board in on this?
I can. One component of that deed that was left out in the reading there was the reversionary clause that says, however, to the condition that if any other use may or set premises, the title hereto, or thereto shall revest to granters or their heirs or signs. And the question brought to me, and it was either in July or August of two thousand seventeen, and this is kind of for Commissioner Hensley's benefit, we've discussed this multiple times. The question to me was, could this property be sold? And my answer was, no, it could not be sold, and it's not been sold to this day. So, the, the question at hand was, what do we have there? And so I was sent out to look at both parcels. And we had a two-track, which is tracks for a vehicle, down into overgrown grass in both cases that went down to the Sprague River. That was there. And the, the question to me was, if this is not a park, what would happen to the property? It could not be sold. That was very clear in the deed. It had, if it was not a developed park, it had to be returned to the granters of the property, which was done by deed on August eleventh, two thousand seventeen. Easy for me to remember, it's my anniversary. Anyway, that's what was done. We had no contact from the heirs of that estate. Now, I think you all know the process we go through every year on tax delinquencies, I'm putting on the tax app now, is we're very diligent in digging with all available resources to try and find heirs, relatives, anything else, any piece of property that has a delinquent tax balance on it. We're going on the fourth year now, we've not been able to contact those people. So this property will come back at some point to be an issue for us, and what do we do with this property? Because it will potentially go into tax foreclosure. Not currently, but it could. So I guess that maybe lays out how we got to where we're at today. The property put before me, because at the time, you can probably recall, Commissioner Hensley wasn't part of it at the time. We had over a thousand pieces of property that were just Clamath County property. And we sensed determined if they're beneficial needs for the county in any, any means, then we figured out what that need was and got them to either Public Works or different, different groups to use that property. Otherwise, we enlisted them if we could in our property sales process, so. That's how we got to where we are.
You seemed like you were about to say something.
Okay, I'd like to. There was no notification to nobody that this was taking place. Who gave these people the authority to make the decision, well, we're gonna take this park and we're gonna give it back? Who gave those people the authority to do that? And, and there was no discuss.
There were, there were open meeting discussions.
Where was the open meetings?
In this room, in that room next door.
There was no community people involved, was there?
It was a published notice meeting. When?
So we can't have the back row?
Yeah, but anyway.
So that's my answer to you.
Okay, well, thank you.
Okay, so from the board level, this is what I need to check in with, because this is a board work session. Does the board have questions, comments, thoughts, anything?
So, I'm obviously drawing back five years, right? As I recall, five years ago, we had a discussion. And it was, the parks system, as you indicate, could no longer afford to properly maintain the grounds. Just, and I know you list the dollars in here, it also lists the grounds that are supposed to be taken care of. There were no monies directly related to Nimrod Park that were being, coming from the, from the state of Oregon. I know you disagree, but I'm just gonna say, that is the case. It was determined or recommended to us that it could not be maintained as a park within the resources that we have within our park system. Every, folks who know the funding model for our park system know that there is no funding model for our park system, right? For county parks, other than what comes from the state of Oregon through the, I think that's the Water Board.
It's Marine Board.
Marine Boards, thank you. I was searching for a word, couldn't find it. At that time, it was, if we cannot maintain this as a park, what happens? Well, according to the deed, it gets reverted back to the granters of the property and/or their heirs, which is what occurred. It was reverted back to the people who gave it to the county in the first place because the county could no longer afford to maintain it as a park. That is what occurred to the best of my recollection, I'm going back five years. So you're gonna have to forgive me, right? So, and, and I recall the conversation in this room, I was sitting right here, you were also the chair that year. Commissioner Boyd was there, and we went through that, kind of that process. As you're, as we've spoken on the phone before, and as you just heard, it was reverted back to those heirs, but those heirs aren't paying the property taxes.
They're all deceased. They are all deceased.
So then it becomes their heirs, or their.
No, but there was no further investigation after that because most people didn't even live at some of those addresses that they notified. And, and.
So then it becomes a situation which we have all of the, all over the county where nobody's paying the property taxes. So here, probably in another year, it becomes our problem again, and we'll have to decide what to do with that property, probably in another year.
Forget about the word terminology, park. It's an access that we have, public access to the river. Without that, we have no more access.
That is not true.
Now, we're all being cheated out of our public access to go out and have recreation. Now, would you say it doesn't cost nothing to have an access?
I, I'm just, I'm.
No, I understand.
Going back and recalling the conversation.
I understand, Commissioner, I completely, and I have fifty years of public service.
Okay, so it sounds like we, if this is what, if the board agrees on this, that, you know, it's in, it's sort of in the hands or in the process of property management now. The board will continue to get guidance from county staff. We, we hear you, you know, you had your opport, you've had this opportunity to speak with the board.
No, I didn't get a chance.
I know, we're not gonna go through this whole, we'll go through this whole.
No, no, I just have about ten more minutes. Because he took up half my time.
It's board discussion, board driven, so the board will ask if they have additional questions. I do want to give, sir, I don't know who you are and what your role is in this, but you can come up. I'll give you, you know, introduce yourself and, and say what you'd like to say. Then I'm gonna turn it back over to the board and we're gonna wrap up.
Perfect. My name is Jeff Wern, I'm actually a homeowner there in Sprague River. I'm representing the Farleys who actually own part of Lot twenty, they own all of that land right through there. It's two hundred and seventy-four acres? Seventy-three acres. So their land butts up against this park, I'm gonna use that in quotes, because it is not a park, it's privately owned. It is not an access point to the river. Their property has been surveyed, we have the surveys, it's been recorded. The survey lines clearly come right across the backside of the park on the south side. That separates the park, again in quotes, from the actual river. So there is no legal access to the river without crossing their property. So I want to make sure that's clear.
Yeah, so does the board have questions, you reminded me of your name.
Yep, Jeff Wern.
Does the board have any questions, Jeff, county's thoughts?
I do, yeah, can you help me?
Absolutely.
So you had it surveyed, is this accurate?
This is very accurate, we actually went out and I have pictures of it. This is the fence line where the dotted line is. And the gate, which is about right there. So you clearly have to cross through their property to get actually to the river.
I see what you're saying, okay.
So.
Thank you.
Yep, the fence does not go to the river, it's on the north side of the river.
And that's the river moved a little bit there too?
The river has changed, so absolutely, yeah.
Okay.
Which, yeah.
So I need to check back in with the board, does the board have any questions of, I mean, we have Vince on the agenda, you clearly had a role. Thank you for staff. I, I don't take comments from the audience generally, or.
She's not talking behind.
Who, who are you and what do you?
I'm from Finkerton, there is an heir to that. I don't know how they got the address for twenty-two hundred, a Florida drive, like unit four. Because they never lived at that address, but they do have a great grandson. So I don't know how, he said there's no.
Yeah, let me know, that's a great inform, it's information.
So follow up with Rick after the meeting, that's helpful, that's helpful. Anything else from the board?
Does that help?
Of these things?
I don't have questions, you, you got a hundred thirty feet to the river.
Any identified follow-up? I mean, it sounds like property management is taking it through process. You know, now you've made an additional connection, anything before I wrap up? I don't generally take the audience, but what do you got, sir? And you need to introduce yourself so it gets up my.
My wife and I.
Introduce yourself, please.
On that, and.
Bill, Bill Farley.
Tell them who you are.
Yeah. And that water that comes right along that park is not the river. The river is clear over by the old railroad channel over there. That is a man dug channel through there by the park. It goes by the park and then back into the river. The water comes out of the river on the east side of our property. It comes all the way through our property and back into the river on the west side. So what they're saying that that is the river going through there is not true.
All right, so I think, again, this is board work session. Is the board needing any additional information or wanting to share any additional thoughts? All right, so I'm wrapping this up, because this is, again, I'll, I'll let you say one last thing, Vince, and then I'm adjourning or.
I want to say thank you for letting me come on. My intentions were for the community, it's not for me. This property was sold to Mike Sweet over five years ago. Nobody knew about that. It hadn't even gone up for taxes. Should we all hear that?
No.
Wrap, okay, let's wrap it, you were on.
And anyway. This property was sold before everything was supposed to take place. I think it was covered up, from what I see of the county documents. And I think the county commissioners, hopefully, would investigate this. And I'm sincere in what I say. Like I say, this involves everybody. And I'm sincere in what I say. Like I say, this involves everybody. For fifty-eight years, it just wiped out. And our community supports the county commissioners real well. And now we're being payback for all our support. Our community is having a payback where we have no more access. And I figure we didn't have our county commissioner represent us or defend us at the time. And we didn't have the parks manager defend us at the time, which they should have. Each year, the county parks gets grants for one hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars. From the Marine Board, Parks, and sometimes you get timber receipts. Like I say, if we lose this access or the other access, I think it was a complete cover-up and we were treated. We weren't represented by the county at all. The people that are supposed to represent us, they've bailed out. And I think that's unfair. And I really do mean, I think it was unfair. And if I, you know, I'm getting to ramble on. I appreciate coming up. But like I say, the last, my last words, we were treated unfair.
All right, well, thank you for coming and speaking with the board. If the board doesn't have anything else, I'm going to adjourn our meeting at eleven twelve.